Okay, the time is on seven forty before all this. Complaint, those special boards, voting for September fifteenth. Call.
All right, Kevin Cunningham.
Thank you, Board.
Item C, new business number one, discuss an act on forensic audit operation review of police department payroll, procurement practices and procedures, and asset forfeiture financial account. Any comments or questions?
I got another one. First off, the notice of this meeting was done on Friday night at eight thirty, and it was blocked on Thursday morning at eight twenty. Having the time hall be closed until Monday morning, it was a look, or any of the places we were, it's really hard to re-pack it, which I got Saturday, and then be able to ask my own questions. All right, for the record, I am not against auditing any department in this town, okay? What I am against is following the proper paper procedure, or proper procedures and protocols. I am for an independent audit of all town departments. They all should, everything's audited every year, okay, including the police department. Town's audited, the police department's audited every year. This audit has been done, okay? All the town departments, the paperwork have been supplied, that I have been supplied, goes back to 2022. Questions that I asked you about last time, that, what were the individual questions? There are only three that I've been supplied with from the year of 2022, okay? Now, you got more?
No.
Oh, okay, just checking on it, because you handed me stuff five and three four. Making sure. Now, now it's being requested that this audit go back to 2017. Last time, the last meeting was 2020. Now we're going back to 2017. Seems like we didn't have enough here, so now we want to do fishing expeditions even further back. We didn't have a no confidence vote in our, in our first electorate and our, and Kelly, okay? I have, I have a real problem with fishing expeditions, okay? Also, I'd like to say at the beginning of this meeting, just to make you aware, I'm sure you were watching, but just in case you weren't, the police commission has informed the police department in a proclamation for the police department to not hand over any documents without first going through the commission, and they are requesting legal counsel to make sure the process is transparent and legally done. So there are no more allegations. We need to make sure this is properly done, and this, this whole thing has been poorly done. I went through some other meeting minutes, and I have not found very much, where anything has been brought to the police commission to make sure that they're aware of any problems that were with the police department, okay? At last meeting, that was clearly stated by everybody. We have a police commission for a reason. Our police commission is here to make sure the police are doing what they need to do. If there are any concerns from any person in this town, they should bring it to the attention of the police commission. The police commission will then investigate and make sure we're doing things properly at the, at the police department. That's how this should have been handled. It shouldn't be going here, jumping over hurdles and causing this kind of trouble, this kind of trouble.
Can I make a point of order? We've exceeded the amount of capacity in this room as a safety hazard and a fire marshal matter?
Are there any people who are in attendance, push a step out? What's the number, Jim?
We're thirty-one, thirty-two. You gotta have, you can't have over thirty.
Off that now. Nope, that is it, that is it. Oh, also, so just to, for the matters that you, you sent me paperwork on, okay? Police Department forfeit, asset forfeiture, yeah? Police Department asset forfeiture account, you can hand that down to Art, okay? The accusations that you gave me a packet of, this is vote for both of yous, okay? In less than a day, because that's all I had to ask my own questions, in less than a day, the act, the comments that were made on why we need to pay forensic audit, in less than a day, I found most of the answers. Okay? It's all public record. Y'all can look. And if you can't look, I can give you the three, the three things I'm aware of that we produced tonight, that, to make sure that the allegations are not valid. In, in less than a day, I got my answers to two out of the three. Wasn't that hard. If, if we had done it right, we would have done this before it got to this point, before we had the whole town in an uproar and making allegations. All of that.
Well, she just handed me more information.
Yes, I did. And, and like I said, I only had less, I only had today to go for, to find this out, okay? This, the documents for this meeting were done on Thursday morning at eight twenty, okay? I found out at not eight thirty on Friday night. And it took me less than, I had, every, I had as much as I could get by three o'clock. The answers to some of these allegations. And there's only three of them on here, by the way. We're gonna do a forensic audit, thirty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna do legal counsel from the police department, we're gonna have legal counsel for the town, okay? For three tiny, tiny questions that I got the information on. This is gonna cost us well, well over seventy, hundred thousand dollars, because orders are cheap. Okay? I'm, I'm not against audits of any kind. I just believe that since the whole town is already audited every year, including the police department, and there were any questions that should, we should have gone to the police commission, and if we're gonna audit one department, because someone, there's paperwork missing, which I got the paperwork on, if there's paperwork missing, then we should have asked the police commission to investigate to find out where this stuff is. Everything can get misfiled, none of us are perfect. None of us don't misfile or mis, put something in the wrong folder in our computer or whatever. None of it. All you gotta do is ask, they will, here, here's, hit what you're missing, which means, including the finance department. We all are human. None of us are perfect, we do our jobs perfectly. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, so I did research. And forensic audits are more common now with businesses, they just are, to check books, to check finances, okay? So I went on Google, AI overview, that was the first one that came up, I'm using it. This is the meaning of it. A forensic audit is a detailed examination of financial records to uncover and analyze evidence of fraud, misconduct, or other irregularities. Often, not always often, for potential legal action or internal investigations. Unlike a standard financial audit, a forensic audit is typically targeted using specialized investigative techniques to follow money trails and produces findings that can be used in court proceedings or to support insurance claims. Common reasons for a forensic audit include suspected embezzlement, or financial statement fraud, conflicts of interest, and asset, asset misappropriation. So that's the definition I came up with, okay? Just, I wanted to be clear on that, it's not just for criminal reasons.
Embezzlement is criminal, a embezzlement is criminal.
Publicly regularities is not criminal, okay?
You just mentioned the word embezzlement, and that's.
That is one of them, yes. It is often for this reason, criminal reasons, but not always, okay? And I don't, I'm, listen, I'm not quarter, I'm, I'm not board of finding, I mean board, I'm not board, I'm not the finance department, I'm not the police department, I don't see these things, okay? So as a resident, which I represent the residents of the town, I can see why they might wanna see, that each side is right. So this is where we're coming to now, with, in light of everything that's happening, in light of having a vote of no confidence in the finance director, okay?
Overpaying a little bit.
This is not, so much was said last week about who should do this, who should do that. I did the investigation on this, okay? General statute, now I'm gonna read all this, just because I did the research. General statute, section seven, dash two seven six, six, powers of commissioners. Such boards shall have all powers given by the general statutes to boards of police commissioners, shall have general management and supervision of the police department and of such town, police department, of such town, and of the property and equipment used in connection therewith. Shall make all legal regulations for the government that are not contrary to law and may prescribe suitable penalties for the violation of any such regulation, including suspension or removal from office or, of any officer or member of such police department. Such board shall have the sole power of appointment, promotion, and removal of the officers and members of such police department under such regulations as it adopts for the purpose, and such appointees shall hold office during good behavior and until removed for cause upon written charges and after hearing. The members of such police department shall have all authority with respect to the service of criminal process and the enforcement of the criminal laws, as is vested by the general statute in police officers' principles. So that's their powers, okay? I see nothing in that, that they oversee any finances of the police department. And I might add that, just like I was as a board selectman, we work for the town, they work for the town, they work for the residents, they do not work for the police department, we do not work for the police department, or the finance department. We don't work for Kevin Cunningham, okay? And he, as he's sitting here, he's sitting here as a board of selectmen. That's one. Okay, section seven, dash two seven seven, it's town to bear expenses. The expenses, salaries, and all costs of maintenance and equipment for such police department shall be paid by such town in the same manner as other expenses of the town government. So in other words, they should have the same payroll, have the same procedures as any other department. And this is what we're being told, that they're not, okay?
They're not what?
Following the same procedures.
They are, we just gave them full control over their payroll, so that everything was okay, so that, so that.
The AVP?
Yeah, so that, so that.
I don't know this, okay? I, I don't know this.
I'm telling you, that he just opened it up last time.
I don't think he said that. I think it was Colleen, but that's okay.
No, he said it a couple times, that if we had, that they.
To, to change, to make it right, right? They could have control to send these things down.
So there's no more payroll and reg, regular.
I get that, but it's still, it's still, it's on the town to do this, it's not on the police commission to do this.
Right, but it's also us working together to make sure that everybody's paid properly.
Well, that's our job.
Yeah, that's our, that's our job.
I can get to that, okay, okay, I'm getting to that. And then from the charter, four, one, L, not I, because that was a different board, four, one, L, the board of police commissioners shall be the traffic authority and shall have the powers and duties prescribed by law, which I just read, and that's, that's their powers and duties, and that's it. Next one, comes from the charter, this is chapter five, board of selectmen. This is our job, okay? And these are just, these are just the points that address this issue. In chapter five, dash three A, the board of selectmen shall direct and supervise the affairs of the town and be responsible for coordinating the activities of the officers, boards, commissions, and other agencies of the town. By three B, the board of selectmen shall have all powers, duties, and responsibilities conferred upon it by this charter or the general statutes, and all powers proper, incidental, or convenient to their exercise. By five B, the board of selectmen shall institute, prosecute, defend, or compromise any legal action or proceedings by or against the town. By five D, the board of selectmen may employ such staff with such powers, duties, and responsibilities as they deem desirable to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the board of selectmen. And that's what we're doing here, is trying to do that. That was it for that. And then chapter six, first selectmen, section six, dash two, duties. A, the first selectmen shall be responsible for the execution and carrying out of ordinances, resolutions, policies, and other actions voted by the board of selectmen for the town meeting. B, the first selectmen shall be responsible for coordinating the administration of the offices, agencies, boards, and commissions of the town, except those functions expressly reserved or delegated to such agencies by law or discharge. C, the first selectmen shall be responsible for a continuous review of the current and future needs of the town, including the financial needs and budget requirements. D, the first selectmen shall contract for any services, which this is, and contract to purchase any supplies, equipment, and other commodities required by any town agency except the board of education. E, the first selectmen shall be responsible for the administrative and personnel policies of town offices and employees as established by the board of selectmen. F, the first selectmen shall direct and supervise the administration of all departments and offices of the town, except as otherwise provided by this charter or by law. And G, the first selectmen shall coordinate and assist the board of selectmen in the discharge of all the board's duties and responsibilities. Okay? So now we're clear on what jobs we have, okay? If you're listening to me. It is our job to make a decision on this, okay? Now, I put some bullet points, and I'm gonna read those too. First was finger pointing. I wrote that down, finger pointing from the two departments. Not for me, I'm not finger pointing anyway. I, I'm, I'm listening to the public on this, I did ask questions, but at this point, I can't believe either department, and I shouldn't, I should, I, I should want this actually. And it was said last week, that we should cast out doubt, okay? So if this is not passed, there'll continue to be doubt long there. Whoever's doubting this right now, which a lot of people are, they're gonna continue to doubt, do we want that for IPD? Do we want that for our finance department, that, that doubt, right? And then what happens if we don't pass it? Do we go on the same way with the issues that we're having? Or, you know, the two departments haven't been, come to a resolution? So it's our responsibility to make sure this happens, that they, they come to, it, this has to be mentioned, but it really does, okay? So what happened six years ago was unfortunate, that there was personal issues in the finance director's department, prior, all right? And, and I'm already looking at this, this is a vote of no confidence in her, okay? So this will be the next step, is they're gonna ask me to do this, okay? I'm just saying, it, it.
That's your assumption.
It's my assumption, all right?
You're reading something, something that has to happen.
So I'm trying to be ahead of it, and clear the air, by putting this audit out that goes deeper than just samples, okay? Because that's what an audit does, a regular yearly audit, just takes samples. It doesn't do a deep dive into finances.
Can I just say something? So if there's a conflict between two departments, why are we not auditing both departments?
They are, it's in there. It's in there.
It's not, you're not auditing the finance department?
It's in there, read it, it's in there. So anyway, I'll go on. My next bullet point, we work for the residents of the town, as does the board of police commissioners. We don't work for the finance department, don't, and I already said this, we don't work for anyone else but the town, okay? We gotta keep that in mind. Many residents I've talked to overwhelmingly want this to happen.
You're talking to different people than I.
I've talked to all different people, yes. People I don't even know, come up to me.
Same here.
Okay? And this is what they're saying to me, so. Now, bullet point, the police department should welcome an audit to show the residents that there are no issues, okay? I, I don't see a problem, I really don't, okay?
The problem, the problem that I see is that I don't think it's, I don't think we're being transparent.
I, I agree, we're not.
No, we're not being transparent.
We aren't, we are being transparent. This is our job to do this.
Our job is to work with the departments within our town.
That didn't work, that didn't work.
To resolve any problems, well, they weren't brought to the proper authorities, they weren't brought to the commission, they weren't, the, the problems weren't brought there, so how could they have been resolved? If they weren't brought to the proper authorities, with the proper procedures, in the proper place, and the proper time, then how can they be resolved without the proper steps being taken? Tell me, I mean, I'm just.
Oh, to me, I'm taking that step. I'm taking that step by doing this.
Point is, we've come to a point where we're auditing the police department, that's auditing the finance department too then, we're gonna do that.
It's in there, you didn't just look it up while I was talking.
Listen to me.
Whatever. It's in there, you want me to find a point for?
Yeah, finance department, you're gonna audit the, the finance department. When it doesn't pertain to the police department.
Other town payroll records for the police department maintained by the town finance department, item B.
Police department, pertaining to the police department.
Right, but for the town, the town side. We're not talking about the other departments. She doesn't have a problem with any other department, though. She only has a problem with the police department.
She has a problem with that. You're asking a question, let me finish.
And they have a problem with her, don't they?
Yeah.
Because they, they.
And that's why they're still auditing her too.
There is, I'm telling you, there is.
You're not, you're just, we're, we're looking for an audit, a forensic audit of, on page, right on, right on, right on the, right on the town meeting, it says, discuss an act on a forensic audit and operational review of the police department, the police department's payroll, procurement practices, procedures, and asset for, uh, finance, uh, asset for forfeiture, again, that word, financial accounts. It says nothing in here about the finance department, read it.
Other town payroll records for the police department maintained by the town finance department.
For the police department, you're calling for the police department.
Exactly, because, because there are no problems with any other department, because I've had, I have, I have.
Well, someone told you there's no problems, great.
And this is, I don't know this, you have to, and this is what I'm.
I'm saying if there's a conflict between the two, if there's a conflict between the two, let's, let, if there's a conflict between the two, let's clear the air on both sides of this. Clear the air on both sides of that.
Either she's, either she's got bad accounting, or they do.
Exactly, and that's why you need to audit that, because if she has bad accounting, you're not. You're auditing one department, you're auditing one department.
You're auditing the whole town. I believe that the item B does talk to the finance department, which is sooner she's supposed to be doing.
I believe that's what.
I believe it does.
If they, if they, if she's screwing up with the police department finances, we'll, we'll have to deal with that, won't we?
I believe this.
I don't care what shakes out, really, I don't.
I believe that we're going after one department when it could be both. If, if, we could be both departments that have the issues. And again, I'm gonna say it again, if we're gonna audit one department, if the exact things that we're, you're talking about here could be happening in other departments. Could be, there could be, there could be invoices missing, there could be, uh, uh, town property that's not being properly documented, there could be, you know, we don't have the proper documentation on a lot of things.
So it may come to me, when these other departments come to me?
Mm-hmm.
I might consider that, but there's nothing for me right now.
There's nothing for you right now, because someone has, has a problem with another department.
No.
We've had this before.
No, no, no. This issue's, this issue's on both, obviously.
Obviously, so that's auditable, fine.
It is.
You're only auditing the police department.
You're auditing, you're auditing the finances of, what on both sides?
Pertaining to the police department.
So, so, so you're back to, you wanna audit the whole town?
I've been saying that from the beginning, if there, because these issues that.
So you wanna, you wanna spend what, a hundred thousand?
I, I wanna spend.
Where is your problem secondary?
How do you know that?
Because they would've said.
What do you mean they would've said?
They would've come forward, they would've, they would've voiced.
Maybe, maybe they're not aware of the problems that they're, that they, maybe they're not aware of the procedures that they're violating, maybe they're not aware of, a lot of things are done in good faith, a lot of things are done in good faith. You know what I mean? And this is gonna cost hundreds of that, hundreds, oh, oh, way over, because there's gonna be people gonna be lawyering up, and there's, we're gonna be paying water费. This has happened in town before. But, it, it happened in town before, this is thirty-five thousand, and I don't even know what the cost of.
This has never happened in town. That was one of my questions. Did we ever have a forensic audit, non-frequent department, never?
No, back to this, we've had one, one commission and one department, uh, I'm not getting along, and they sued each other.
What?
Years ago, you can look it up.
Doesn't mean that was right.
It just means it's right now.
What's with the forensic audit?
I'm not saying it's forensic audit, I'm just saying this is gonna cost, because people are gonna lawyer up, and when they start lawyering up, to make sure that they're, they are not being abused, and they are not having allegations made against them that are sexually untrue, and if there was a problem with this.
That's what I wanna know, and that's what I wanna know, and that's what the residents of the town wanna know.
And the residents should be, should be, have both, both the rights.
That's what they wanna know.
What do you guys think, Kevin?
Item B, go back to the other, other town payroll records for the police department maintained by the town finance department, what if, what if the audit comes back and says, okay, the town finance department has some problems with the way they do their record keeping?
That's why we need to audit that department, that's why we need to audit that department. Let's just audit both departments, since they're not getting along, and make sure everybody's complying with everything that they're supposed to. Now, honesty, guys, there's gonna be things that people doing, who they didn't know they weren't supposed to be doing, or they are, are aware, that's, that's, that's human nature, okay? As long as it's done in good faith and not done maliciously, that's by problem. We just say, look, guys, you gotta do it this way, because that's apparent. Look, guys, you can't do that, because that's not, you know, that's not proper record keeping, or that. I'm, I'm just, again, we're other people.
I'm not, I'm not gonna, and I'm not gonna get deep into, into what, what they did was, I'm not gonna, because I don't know all that, and that's what a forensic audit will do.
We work for the people, we work for the people, so we should be doing both sides of that street, not coming down on one side. We work for the people, you just said we work.
Both sides of the street, there's no two sides, we work for the people.
No, there isn't, and we shouldn't, we, right now, we're going, we're, we're saying we want a forensic audit of the police department. We should say, we should, if we work for the people, we should be fair.
People haven't, they haven't said anything to me about any other department? Imagine that.
Well, they talk to me, so people talk to you, and people talk to me, and people talk in all over town, because this is how, this is how the small towns are compared by town. It is, but that's how this works.
Especially me.
I'm just gonna ask what your pleasure is at this time.
I'll make a motion then. Except power of reals in Ingram for the forensic audit of this department, and thirty-five, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
And that would be for the.
Right, they don't think, forensic audit and operational review of police department payroll, clearance practices and protocol procedures, and asset forfeiture financial accounts. Power of reals in Ingram, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? If there are any that aren't there to say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose?
Aye.
Motion parrot. Motion to adjourn?
Um, hold on, so this is going to, they go to the board of finance, eh?
Kelly already has money, and you'd like to cover that.
But, but you're not going to go to the board of finance?
You have money in the office.
Finance, it, after recommendation by the board of select, this is section two, point five, after recommendation by the board of select or the board of education, gonna go with the charter, and approval of the board of finance, if you need the approval of board of finance, and resolution of non-budget appropriation warrant come out, more than ten thousand dollars, but not more than fifty thousand dollars, after recommendation by the board of selectmen or the board of education, and approved by the board of finance, and resolution. any resolution for any non-budgeted appropriation of more than fifty thousand dollars shall be placed on a call of a town meeting, and after completion of the other business, after reasonable discussion of such appropriation, the moderator, blah, blah, blah.
Maybe you get those every week, right?
Yep.
Okay. Right there, it says audit.
I'll please.
She's left in the audit.
So wait a minute, it's limited for the thirty, what, thirty-five thousand, here's all that right here.
That's not proper, because they're on, right there.
So, right, it's gonna fall back to thirty-nine thousand dollars. What is this, now, you just take this audit, and run it back to twenty-seventeen? You're telling me they wrote a proposal for twenty-seventeen?
Yes.
When you, when at the last thing, you said that it was for twenty-twenty? You have to break the three more years. You cannot, listen, I've been in auditing for, in, in business for a very, very long time, forty-seven years, okay? I'm gonna tell you, when a, when a company, when a company gives you a quote for a certain period of time, because that's a certain amount of work, they aren't gonna go back three years for it.
Hey, the end of your package that I gave you, you see the addendum?
Mm-hmm, I did, just go back to twenty-seventeen.
That's part of that.
Well, where's the new proposal?
That, it's part of that bid.
So you went out to bid for twenty-seventeen before, and you were saying twenty-twenty before?
Yep. No, I said it's twenty-seventeen, and that's the number that we put out to bid.
The thing you put out was twenty-twenty. It went out for twenty-twenty.
The addendum was already in there online.
Again, the addendum went back three more years, and it's gonna cost more money, and all you've got is thirty-nine thousand.
I didn't say it was gonna cost, I, hey, I said the addendum was put out there, and that's what they bid on.
They bid on twenty-twenty, according to your packet. Right here, it says, these services are to be borne for the town for twenty-twenty-two present date.
And all of these are also sent out to all eleven of the companies that put their bid in.
So you're saying to me, that you put in this presentation twenty-twenty, but you really wanted twenty-seven?
That's why the addendum was put up.
And it's not gonna cost us any, how, how can they do a proposal for twenty, twenty-twenty to present in their forensic invasification approach? And now, and, so where's the proposal going back to twenty-seventeen? That doesn't make any sense, yeah?
That's what I'm saying, so that whole audit back to twenty-seventeen.
I wanna see the invoice for it, could it?
Well, I get it.
Okay.
We were just ordering on a company time.
Let, let's do it before we have to go start something that we haven't admitted appropriate to pay for, because you only have thirty-nine thousand dollars there. If, at, from twenty-twenty.
Good question. The motion was made for thirty-four thousand, five hundred, second one voted up.
Yes, because that went, in the packet, it says twenty-twenty is what they're gonna analyze, says right here, forensic investigation approach for twenty-twenty-two present date, analyze, analyze, period, it says.
You can double-check your copy tomorrow, I'm telling you, it's thirty-four thousand, five hundred.
And then this is, the, the packets they put together, there's an error check, and it's not like, it might be, that one, and that one.
Can I go on to the adjourn?
Of course.
Back to the more money for that?
Second?
Yep, that's in, that, for you.
Your all favor.